This conference will now be recorded.
Hi, what's my serious face? I will call the regular council meeting of Monday, May 19th to order Anna.
Councilmember Perrier?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
And Mayor Proton Walter?
Here.
Please rise for the college.
... of the United States of America and a pseudo-republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Can I have that motion?
It's okay. Two things. Is this on the application? I think I have that. Well, I'm going to motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll move to approve the agenda as printed.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Bridget to approve the agenda as printed, supported by Kevin. Any discussion? Anna?
Councilmember Holliday?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Walter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have one modification to the agenda this evening. Who wants to do that?
I move we add the application for Kenaby's Monchi-Punchy Apple Farm and Cider Mill for a social district permit to be considered by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Add it as 7C.
Councilmember Holliday?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrier?
Aye.
Just so I can get organized here, I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes, any corrections, addition? The stand is printed. Down to public comment, five, public comment. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. Online comments will be accepted after inputs and comments are completed. All comments should be directed to the council and not to the audience. Anyone? Nope. Anyone?
That's only people here today.
So, well, I'm going to close public comment, and now we're down to six, public hearing. And this is the preliminary fiscal year '25 city budget. Anna?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. So on May 5th was when I presented the draft budget. Since then, we have had some changes, one of them being the $50,000 transfer from the perpetual lot care fund. That one was added to the fiscal year '25 projected amount. We also had the approval of the bagged leaf pickup, which increased the budget $4,200 for fiscal year '26 and '27, so that changes in there as well. There was also insurance in the major streets. We accidentally had an extra payment that was paid in this year, but it was supposed to be moved back and got missed, so we have to include that, we have to increase the budget for it. So that added $17,666. So, um, if we go to page nine, please. This was the summary of the estimated revenues and expenditures by fund, and those changes changed the general fund deficit at fiscal year '25. It actually made it, let's see, better. It was, last meeting, 907,926 negative, and now it's 857,926. That's that 50,000. For fiscal year '26, the deficit got a little bit worse because of the increase in expense for the bagged leaf pickup. That increased to 997,178 negative. And then the major streets projected, it was 202,225 negative, now it's 219,891 negative for fiscal year '25. So that got a little bit worse because we increased the expense. On the next page is where we had talked about whether or not we had enough funding. This is an estimate of money proposed to be raised by taxation, and so this is showing, like, in the top-left corner, we've got the general fund, and the total estimated revenue from taxation is 5.2 million. The total estimated revenue from other sources is 8.5 million. Grand total estimated revenue for the general fund is 13.8 million, and the total estimated general fund expenditures is 14.8 million, leaving a reduction from fund balance of So that changed a little bit. I think everything else is the same here, so I just kind of wanted to go through that for the public even. There's nobody here. But one of the things that we are supposed to talk about in the public hearing for the budget is taxation. So, we did get the numbers from Ted Summers with county equalization, and we, the city, are subject to a headly millage reduction this year. So, in '24, we levied 15.9827 mills, and we have to reduce that. And we will only be able to levy 15.8436 mills. That is because of a millage reduction fraction, it's called. So how that's calculated, it does. So what they do to come up with that is they take our 2024 taxable value, they subtract our losses, and then they multiply that by the inflation rate of 1.031. They get that number, and then it's divided by the 2025 taxable value based on SEV minus additions. So when all of that was taken into account, we are subject to a headly millage reduction fraction of .9913. So it's applied against our millage, our city operating millage, and it's also going to be applied against the TBTA, extra-voted millage, because theirs falls under our taxable value as well. As far as the DDA, they have their own millage reduction fraction, and theirs is .9825. So last year, we levied 1.9812 mills. This year, they're going to, they can only levy 1.9465 mills, and these are permanent reductions. The only way a millage, a headly override can take place is by a vote of the city residents of the electorate. And then if that were to override, we could potentially go back up to our original allotted millage of 17.5 mills. So every year, the taxable value can only increase by the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is lower. So this year, overall, I think we increased by over 5%. And the way that that happens is if there are transfers of ownership on a parcel, because it uncaps, and then the taxable value goes up to meet the SEV, the state equalized value, and then it caps again. That happens in the year after transfer or purchase. So there must have been several of those that pushed us up over the 5%. So not every parcel is subject to the over 5% you're capped at, 5%. But any questions on that?
The uncapping would have come from the selling of our property.
Yeah. So if you sold a house to someone, then it would uncap for that new owner in the next tax year.
Yeah, but everyone wants to keep three walls up if they're renovating, so it's fair.
Um... I'm not sure if that's the same thing or not. I don't know. Um, well, that, I mean, it's still changing ownership, and that's what it goes based on.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what properties do we?
Not us.
Not us, thank you, okay.
Personal property. So Danny sold this house, it becomes uncapped. I sell my house, it becomes, the city doesn't sell properties.
No.
That's right.
Owners have to tell us if we can.
Yeah.
Yes, well, thank you.
Right. So the, um, all of the properties within the city limits are grouped together to get a taxable value. So for this year, for '25 tax year, our total tax base is $316,250, I can't even speak numbers anymore, $316,256,139. Yeah.
What I was thinking on this is the headly override has dropped the numbers down. Now, this is going to be going in to re-calculate what our taxable revenue coming in. So how much did that change?
Well...
Budget?
So we're still getting more money than we did before. That's why we're subject to a headly rollback. Our values went up enough to, and even multiplied by that lower millage rate, we're still taking in more revenue than we did last year. Because last year, our, I think we were at 299 million in value, now we're at 316 million. So that increase multiplied by the lower rate still brings us in more taxable revenue than the previous year. Yeah. So an easy way to figure it is to take that 316 million and just drop off the ending, so you've got 316,256 times that by our millage. That's what our anticipated revenue is. But I don't always budget for the full amount that we are expected to get, because we don't always get it, especially in the personal property tax. We do on the real tax side, but not personal property, because it's up to us to collect on that. The county, when they, when the tax year is done, and we reconcile with the county on March 1st, they basically make us whole on anything that we didn't collect on. So we'll be made whole on that piece of it, and then they can continue the process of attempting to collect on it, and after two years, then it can go into foreclosure. And they can, they have, the county treasurer has the power to foreclose on a property we don't. I think there's one other thing that changed was we collected some delinquent taxes since last, since I, since two weeks ago. I just called them up, and they paid over the top. It was either that or we weren't going to do business with them anymore, because they are somebody that we do business with. That's one of the things, is that if they are in debt to us, we can't do business with them. Um, all right. I think that's all that I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Anna? Okay, so I'm going to open public comments. Anyone? Anyone online? Okay. So I'm going to close public comment. Did we have any written requests? So I'm going to close the public hearing and council discussion. So, do you want me to start? Do you want me to start? Okay. And I just had a few things in the budget. Most of them were fees, so let me get to fees. But I think in the packet, I'm not sure where. I'll get there. Yeah. It's 122 in the budget, but I don't know.
Go to that. That means 122 in the budget?
In the budget, it is. So many. But I don't know, in the packet, the number. Somebody gets there before me, tell me.
In the packet, I think it's around 175.
I'm almost there. Okay. So, and fees on page, on the top of page 134, and I talked to Rachel about this this morning, just so that everyone's aware, I gotta get there still. It says, on the top of page 134, it says, and we're talking about the rental inspection fees, it has, it says appeals, and it says, "Fees for tenants may be waived by the city manager upon demonstration of financial hardships." But tenants don't pay, tenants don't pay those fees. So we think, and staff can discuss that, but that should be eliminated.
We discussed it, and we agree, as the council does, that we'll just eliminate it altogether.
Okay, and then...
Next statement.
Is this the right page?
On 134, of the budget.
The budget.
84 of the cities. He's not, Kevin's on it.
Kevin's on it. Just did your job.
Very good.
And then at the top of page 139, and this, and this comes a couple of times, and Rachel and I discussed this this morning because, I gotta get there. And this is for rental of, um...
Agents.
So it's page, on the top of page 139, and this is for Bayview Park, and it's sports courts tournament, $50 a day. But like at Bayview, there's several courts. There's the basketball court, there's the tennis court, there's the pickleball court. I think that we have to define, you know, what they're renting, because they can't possibly rent the whole court for $50 and exclude everyone. So, and that comes up there, and it also comes up in, um...
You could probably put the three different lines in there.
Yep.
Yeah.
I discussed it with Steve and Kevin this morning.
I just want, and I just want everybody to know what I saw. And on page 153 of the budget, which still has septage in there, which I'm assuming we're going to remove, because we're not doing that in our new year, correct?
That's correct.
Yep.
And then on, um, on page 155, and this is about, this is about reserving your slip at the marina. You have to pay a hundred, I'm getting there, have to pay $100 by, I'm almost there.
March 1st?
Yeah, by March 1st.
Was that, I, there's one that says the minimum deposit of $100 is due honor before February 1st, is that the one?
Yes. So I just think on that one, we should have language in there that, that they would forfeit that deposit. They don't get it back if they don't pay. It's gone. Even if they're getting another slip, because they've reserved that for the year, kept somebody else from getting it, that they should forfeit that $100. And then on page 157, this was, this was a couple of years ago, a rather lengthy discussion. And this is on seasonal boat launch fees. So in the current budget, as it stands right now, seasonal fees have been reduced to $40 from $50 for, it was $50 for people outside of the city. City residents, it was $25. In this budget, we've eliminated the $25 for city residents, which I disagree with. And seasonal people, so people outside of the city, we've actually lowered it, but it's $40 for everyone in this budget. I still think that city residents should get a break, because they are taxpayers and all of that, because if you look at the way it's written now, last year, they paid $25. This year, though, it goes up $15 for them, but it drops for people outside of the city. So, I don't know if that's me. So I just think that we should leave in the seasonal for city residents and maybe raise it to 25, 35, somewhere in there. I know that we have to make the marina take care of itself. And then if we have to raise seasonal for people outside of the city, I'm good with that, too. And I can't remember, I cannot remember, this morning, I think we discussed...
We discussed, you know, whether or not it should be 60 or, you know, for seasonal outside of the city, or, and then raise it a little bit up to 30 for city residents, but, I mean, you could leave it the same, too. I don't know, I, I personally think it should be the same for everyone, but, again, I defer to the council, and Anna and I discussed it, and we disagree.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't make sense to give a discount to those that aren't receiving one, and then to those that are receiving one to have to pay more. That just does not make sense. I mean, I understand, like, we're trying to get to just one amount, but, I don't know, it doesn't work. So, if you want to do an increase, I would recommend a percentage so that it's fair, it's even, you know, if you want to go up to $60 for the $50 ones, that's a 20% increase, and a 20% increase on the $25 would take it up $5. So, just so it's the same.
That's the point.
I'm good with that. And we have to decide, because we have to tell them, you know, go fix it or don't fix it. So, um, I'm good with that. I just think that city residents should pay less.
So is that, is that the decide percentage, 20% $5 increase, so 40 for non-residents, 30 for residents?
No, it'd be a 20%.
60 for non-residents.
So instead of...
You're still increasing the, okay.
Yeah.
So instead of going with the flat fee, you're going back to the tiers?
Is there somebody really, no...
I don't know what's going on, but I'm good with that. If, I mean, we can try it this year and see, see what it does, and if...
And just for full transparency, the discussion that we had was, okay, so, you know, the general fund is still kind of contributing towards the marina until it's solvent, but I would really like to come back to this when the marina is solvent and we're not using general funds, because then it's being funded by user fees and such. And so then I think having something that is a flat fee might be more reasonable, but that's just my opinion, so I defer to whatever your direction is.
I have a question, just regarding nonprofit organizations. For example, I took some students down, we used Colligan Plaza for a fundraiser. Does everyone pay the same fee, whether they're profit, nonprofit organization? Do we break that down?
So I have some discretion in that. I don't just say nonprofits across the board, but, you know, we generally don't charge for political events, or schools, or someone who's cleaning up the downtown, for example. So that's kind of the criteria. You know, of course, you could give us that direction, but right now, you've left it to my discretion. But those are the three general guidelines that I use.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that, too. Yeah.
Yes. And then my last one, and I had a question on page 160, why we limit the compost to five yards per day?
So we did have a contractor, maybe it was multiple, that were coming in to get 30 yards at a time, and we just don't have that much. You know, we still need to use it for some internal projects, and we want to make it available to all citizens. So we did limit it to, I think it was five yards.
Unless they make prior arrangements.
What page was that on? 160?
160 in the budget.
To 10.
Yeah, so a limit of five yards per day unless prior approval received. So Cindy asked me, for instance, what if I needed 10 yards for a project that's over the weekend? And so she would just contact, or if any citizen would just contact DPW and make arrangements for that, because we know that will come up, but we can't have 30 yards going out a day, or we won't have any left for citizens.
Is the $20 yard comparable to other compost pricing?
I would have to defer to Steve for that, but I think ours is a little bit less from here.
You can reach and check it out, quite a bit. Those students are costing us a lot of cost, but to me, you know, we've got to have somebody out there turning the piles and managing it. So the $20 yard, Shannon did the math, and it basically covers our costs.
Oh, wow, okay.
That is really reasonable.
It is, so, I mean, it's likely people will come, want more than five, got it.
Yes, yeah. Especially the contractors, doing big landscaping jobs. Anyway, but that's what I had in the budget, that my question's in the budget. So if anyone else has...
I have a question, if you don't mind. All right, I guess I'm on, of the entire packet, page 198, and it's a chart. Section 98-56.
It's on 198 of the packet?
The packet in its entirety, yeah. So I'm sorry, that would be page 148 of the budget pack. Okay, just, my question is this, Seaworth is ready to serve, charge totals, and there's nothing there, and the same thing happens in another one of these graphs or tables, and I, I don't know what that line is for.
I think it's just a different type of, because there's the ready to serve, charge quarterly, and then the totals. So I think it's just the same, like, the waters.
Title to the...
Yeah, it's just a title to that portion of the graph.
Okay. It's just a title, but...
It's a, it's a title, and then, so, ready to serve, charge quarterly, and then you have the one-inch meters, greater than one-inch meters, and then ready to serve, charge totals. I think that's right. Yeah. It's excellent. It doesn't, no.
I just didn't know why it's, yeah, why it's there.
I have no idea. It's been there since I started using it. You can just take it up.
Okay.
Okay.
And it happens one more time.
You're absolutely right.
And you wouldn't total those anyway.
No, yeah, because, yeah, then the other one is following 152, there's another table, 152 of the budget in 202. There's another one, ready to serve, charge total.
It's the same, it's the same.
Yeah, it's the same chart, just...
What was the other fee? I'm sorry?
152. So it's on Seaworth.
All right. And that, those were all of my questions.
Kelly, Bridgette, did you have any questions? Kevin?
No, Steve, these are not the proposed waters.
These are not what we want.
Okay.
So that's another thing that will change for the budget on June 2nd.
Kelly, did you have any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, then, um, I'll close the budget hearing. Okay, consent agenda. Governor A builds to be allowed in the amount of $308,852.09. An authorized Mayor Johnson and clerk soy to sign the warrant. The application from Kenaby, Monchi, Punchy, Apple Farm and Cider Mill LLC is recommended for consideration for approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And 7C, the application from Kenaby's Monchi-Punchy Apple Farm and Cider Mill LLC for a social district permit is recommended for consideration, and that's approved by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And that's approved by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. The second. Mayor Proton made the motion for approval. Richard, second, any discussion?
Mayor Manville? Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Walchuk?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier? Councilmember Hollinshead?
Aye.
We have no presentations this evening. We have announcements. The city is still seeking an individual of vacancy on the local officers' compensation committee for a six-year term. And I would just like to remind people that tomorrow, um, the first ever unapproved triple challenge starts at, at Bayview at nine o'clock tomorrow. There'll be some very special people there and some teams ready to go. So, um, everyone come, you'll have fun. I can say, um, we're down to eleven, Board of Officers committees. We have ARPA fund interest request by Anna. You're up again.
The council members who were here in December may remember the request by Chief Edmonds to purchase eight hundred megahertz radios. The project was originally intended to be paid using grant funds, but we were unsuccessful in securing those funds. Therefore, Chief Edmonds asked the council if he could still move forward with purchasing the radios, and we came up with a plan of where to gather the funds. The total cost of the project was one hundred seven thousand, eleven dollars and forty-five cents. The plan was to use sixteen thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars from the additional personal property tax revenue that we had, um, received but not budgeted. And then the balance would come from the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. I'm pleased to report that the ARPA fund currently has one hundred ten thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars available to be transferred for this project. It is my recommendation to transfer one hundred seven thousand, eleven dollars and forty-five cents from the ARPA fund to the general fund and leave the remaining interest in the ARPA fund for now. So we didn't have to use that additional sixteen thousand dollars. Um, basically, it's just going to go to help the general fund. Um, but we have this interest that is sitting there and it's going to continue to earn more interest because, um, we have until the end of calendar year twenty-six to spend these funds. Um, whenever the window project is complete for City Hall, we'll be paying it at that time. But, um, the rest of it is for the baby restrooms. And when is that happening, Steve? Okay. And then, um, when do you anticipate it be finished?
This conference will now be recorded.
In bonds, okay. I thought we were already being recorded. Um, anyway, so the three point nine million in bonds for the following projects. And so I, I don't intend to read all of this unless you want me to. Um, but the Clearwells, obviously, we have started that project. Um, we did receive an appropriation of, um, six million dollars from the state in twenty twenty-two. Uh, but the, um, costs increased for that, and it's now up, um, toward ten million for that project. And so we don't want to take our water fund all the way down. So, um, we're requesting, uh, three million to be, to complete that project. And just as a reminder, we did also, um, submit for a state appropriation for that. So hopefully, something will come to fruition for that, but we can't, um, count on that. Uh, the second project that we would like to fund is, um, the aerial platform, um, fire apparatus. So basically, the, the ladder truck. And as you may recall, we did have a, um, a federal appropriation, um, congressionally directed spending through Senator Peters' office, um, that was never signed by, um, President Trump. So we are no longer receiving it. Uh, we did reapply for those funds, but again, there's no guarantee. That would have covered, um, fifty-five percent of the cost of that. And, um, the total cost of that fire apparatus is two million, seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents, exactly. Um, the build time on that is two to four years. Do you have any more? Four, four years for the ladder truck. So, um, you also may recall that we did have a plan for saving for that. Um, but we had really hoped for that appropriation. So to take a little bit of pressure off of the general fund, um, because the Clearwell project would come from a separate water fund, but the, um, fire truck would come from the fed, the, the general fund and into the equipment fund, because we've transferred anything that we've saved for into that fund. Um, just for your information, we do have enough funding, um, saved in that equipment fund for the, the fire engine that will be two years, or is that four years as well?
Thirty-three months.
Thirty-three months, exactly. So, um, anyway, this is just, uh, we hadn't originally planned on putting the fire truck in there, but when the appropriation fell through, we thought it would be warranted. So, we had requested and received proposals from Miller Canfield and Dickinson Wright for bond counsel. The Miller Canfield, um, proposal calls for a fee of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred, and the Dickinson Wright proposal calls for a fee of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty, which is inclusive of all expenses such as travel, copying, overnight mail, et cetera. The council fees do not cover any filing fees with the state of Michigan, which the city would be responsible for, but would be included as part of the cost of issuance expenses paid from bond proceeds, along with such other issuance costs, such as rating agency fees, paying agent fees, printing of notice of sale, and offering documents. And we did talk about, um, I talked with Mayor Johnson a little bit earlier about how the, um, cost of these fees can also be rolled into the bond proposal. So then we requested and received proposals from Benzinski and Company, did I get that right? All right, and MFCI for financial advisor services related to the bond issue. The, there, I'm, Bezinski, Benzinski, got it? And Company proposal calls for a flat fee of nineteen thousand, five hundred, while the MFCI proposal calls for a fee of eighty-five percent of the bond counsel fee. A scope of services is outlined in proposals for both bond counsel and financial services. I reviewed the proposals for both services with Clerk Treasurer Finance Director Anna Sway, and we recommend entering into agreements with Dickinson Wright for bond counsel and MFCI for financial advisor services for a total of thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. And then I have some recommended motions. Now, I did, um, also talk with each of you about, you know, this is a new process for, I think, all of you. Um, and this was our first process with the city. So I'd like to ask, um, you know, whoever we approved today to come back and do a presentation, to just walk through the steps and the process, um, for bonding for these projects.
Reach out to Miller Canfield, um, because their proposal was based on a bond of forty dollars. So I was wondering, just trying to find out if there's three point nine changed anything, and it, it did come down a thousand. Still wasn't enough to be close to the other.
Yeah. And for previous bond issues, we understand that we used Miller Canfield and Benzinski. But I think either of these attorneys could do a wonderful job.
Okay. So as we move through this, the recommended motions, we have two of them in, in our packet. Um, but to each one, we have to add that the fees will be rolled into the bonds. Um, so that we know that, it's not coming out of general fund.
Well, it wouldn't, it would be from the water fund, but.
So.
What's an estimate of the fees?
There's, I don't know. I don't know what the fees are going to be, um, exactly, because it's going to depend on, on how they sell them too. And we'll have a better idea of that when they get, when we get to that step. Um, so, and, and as I understand it too, the way that this will be paid is there will be, you know, one bond payment, and then we would allocate a certain percentage from the water fund and from, you know, for the Clearwell project and the, um, general fund for the, or equipment fund from the, for the fire truck. But you're saying, um, the motion plus, um, with the fees to be taken from bond proceeds? Is that the correct? Bill, does that sound right to you?
I don't think it's from bond proceeds, it's added to it.
To, thank you, thank you. With fees added to the bond. Okay.
Is there a specific clause or a phrase that we would add to these motions to make them right?
I just have the, um, the motion to sign any documentation with fees added to the bond.
These added to the.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so just.
For each of them.
Each of them.
So we did, um, at our initial meeting with Miller Canfield, um, he talked about two different kinds of bonds that we. One of them is a revenue bond, and it would count towards our debt limit. So the city can only borrow up to ten percent of its debt limit. I'm sorry, ten percent of its taxable revenue. So, um, our taxable value for twenty-five is three hundred and sixteen million dollars. So ten percent of that, we can borrow thirty-one million dollars. We're not even close to that. We currently only have like two point five million dollars in principal debt. That is going to be paid off in five years. Some of it sooner than that. Um, the other bond is a capital improvement bond, and that does not count towards that debt limit. And I felt that he was kind of steering us more towards that.
The capital improvement?
Yeah, so a revenue bond has to be paid with revenues from the water system.
Yep. So he, yeah, he seemed to think that the capital improvement bond would be a better fit for us.
The interest rate is about the same?
Uh, he didn't, yeah, yeah. We don't know that until it gets, it's basically shopped out by our financial advisors.
I think when we did this for recycling, they had a range, it could be. We have a range.
Well, and it depends on the entity that's borrowing to. Or, excuse me, selling bonds.
We also have to find out if we do get an appropriation, if we can pay off this bond.
Yep. Much like we did with the recycling authority, there could be an opportunity to call it back in a certain number of years so it can be paid off early. But, but it's a little bit harder to find buyers for those bonds. We call them callable bonds, so, and you, in a certain number of years, you can pay them off.
So if you're investing in one, it could be, it, it's kind of like it matures sooner. It, it's called sooner than its maturity date. And then the interest rate could change on it. Like, it's not fully locked in for the term of your investment.
Yep. And, and so, yeah, and so that's what our financial advisor will give us the options for, because if you have something that's called sooner, your interest rate's probably going to be higher on it.
That's why they call it callable.
Yeah.
Okay, but if we can cut many years off of it, we're going to save a lot in interest, so it might be worth it.
Yep. And again, if we, if we get that, either of those appropriations, you know, we're not going to want to continue to pay on a bond. So we have to think about that. And the timing of this, um, you know, usually takes about three to four months, as I understand it, um, from start to finish. So, you know, we would have this by the fall. If everything moves forward.
Uh, so one thing I just wanted to note about, uh, you said that for our other truck that we're funded, which we're very close. Uh.
Okay.
Uh, we had fifty thousand dollars that we're going to transfer to the equipment on the current fiscal year, but we also have to do that next year too, and then maybe a little bit in twenty-six. We will.
Okay, so we're close then.
We're very close, yeah.
All right. I changed my statement. We're very close.
I have under sixty thousand.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone have any more, any questions? Any, Rachel? Okay, so entertain, we have two motions, or entertain a motion.
I've moved, we entered into an agreement with Dickinson Wright for bond counsel services in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars with fees added to the bond and authorized Clerk Treasurer Finance Director Anna Sway to sign any documentation.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, um, in support by Mayor Proton, um, to enter into an agreement with Dickinson Wright for bond counsel services in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars with fees added to the bond and authorized Clerk Treasurer Finance Director Anna Sway to sign any documentation. Any discussion? Anna?
Mayor Proton Walchuk?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier? Councilmember Hollinshead?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson? State House Member Mitchell?
Aye.
Moved to enter into an agreement with MFCI for financial advisor services related to the bond issue in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, fifty cents, equal to eighty-five percent of the bond counsel fee, with fees added to the bond and authorized Clerk Treasurer Finance Director Anna Sway to sign any documentation. I'll second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, second by Councilman Carrier, um, to enter into an agreement with MFCI for financial advisory services related to the bond issue in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, equal to eighty-five percent of the bond counsel fee, um, with fees added to the bond and authorized Clerk Treasurer Finance Director Anna Sway to sign any documentation. Any discussion? Anna?
Councilmember Carrier? Councilmember Hollinshead? Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rachel?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Walchuk?
Thank you. Now we have council committee reports, so I'm going to, I'm going to start with Richard.
Well, we did, I did have a retirement account, and I do not have a head for figures at all. But, um, the gentleman that spoke with us was very thorough, and, um, everybody seemed to be pleased, you know, it was an easy, quick meeting.
Okay.
Nothing really.
We made lots of money, right?
It wasn't as bad. It wasn't as bad a report as we thought and we received the actuarial report as well. So the city's annual contribution, required contribution increased, yeah, and it wasn't bad for this year.
And all the funds were like, there was very small differences, so they were pleased that it was the, that it wasn't anything, it's too incremental, I guess.
Thank you. Um, I briefly, I attended the, and I'm trying to find the acronym for the Marine Sanctuary Committee.
Marine Sanctuary.
Okay. All right, so, attended that, heard a really wonderful report by Don, Don LeBarry, and he talked about his thesis and the work that he had done up here. And we also saw what they're doing or trying to do with Blue Force, Blue Force Blue, retired Navy SEAL. Really interesting, they're coming here. And the thing I thought was the standout was the fact that they, these guys who actually do the work for us and film and, and take pictures of the ships and create 3D so that you can put on a headset and actually go inside, they enjoyed coming to our marine sanctuary so much that they've chosen our sanctuary as a training ground for new, new people that come in. So that was, that was really great to hear that. And just briefly, Little Red, we had a meeting on that unofficially, but officially, we are looking at getting done or finding out what the status of the, I guess, I'm not, I'm not sure what they do, if they look through it and see what needs doing and, yeah.
So we're just trying to reset on the project. Council approved several thousand dollars for an assessment and design for, for restoration of the lighthouse. And we're not sure what the status of that is because it was organized through, and I'm drawing a blank on the name of the organization, but they own the lighthouse. And so we hope to have more information on that next time.
Story register. Anyway, it went through the wrong, wrong series of hoops, so they have to go through this particular, through us, I believe, right, to get the survey done. So I learned more about rip rap. Don't call it rip rap anymore. In any case, we're, we're trying to move forward with this soon.
And I'll keep mine brief. On recycling, we've moved the bins from Northern Lights Arena, so we have bins out at the Moose Lodge on Worth Road. There will be a glass bin that will be there and the rest of the bins, the charter township of Alpina took them and they have a glass bin up there. We'll continue to look for a place, another place to move some to, so there's more locations. But it's, it's going to happen. And that's all I have.
We had our quarterly meeting with the emergency services and, well, it's three that meet about every half hour. So mostly we're working on redoing the bylaws, which, well, it's something that's not glamorous, but it's got to be done periodically, so just catching up with it, adding, subtracting from. That's really all I have for this time.
And I, I did not have.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you everyone for your inputs and now we're up to new business and to rehab. Steve, right? Steve Schultz, City Engineer on Water and Sewer. Right.
With the budget nearing completion, the budgeted costs for water and sewer can now be utilized in developing the proposed water and sewer rates for the next fiscal year. Over the last five years, the combined water and sewer rate increases have been five point zero four, two point two eight, two point zero eight, two point zero four, and five percent. With the Second Avenue and Fair Avenue projects now complete and the Clearwells underway, it is important to begin to rebuild the fund balances for future projects, specifically the water fund due to the large Clearwater, Clearwell project. Similar to previous years, staff considered a few different options for the rate increases while also keeping in mind that the rates need to remain acceptable for the users. The table there, there, I show the increases of three, five, and seven, which are pretty typical. And since more funds are needed in the water fund, I proposed a fourth column again this year, which shows an increase of seven percent in the water rate and three percent in the sewer rate. So this averages to a overall five percent increase. With the usages proposed at two hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred, one thousand gallon units of water and two hundred and seventy-four thousand one, two hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred, one thousand gallon units of sewer, these proposed rates would generate approximately two point three million in the water fund and two point oh six in the sewer fund. Approximately sixty percent of which supports the operations and maintenance of the system and the remainder reused for capital projects and to increase the fund balance. Using the seven percent water and three percent sewer increase would result in the following quarterly bill increases to the user. So you're looking at the ten, fifteen, to twenty and twenty-five thousand gallon units increases and the average user is right around the eighteen, eighteen thousand, yeah, eighteen thousand gallons per month, per, per quarter. So they're going to see an increase in that twenty-five dollar range, what you're going to see per quarter. So we, we felt that that's not that much of a, not, not too bad of an increase for what we're getting out of it, you know, in more, heavier increase in the water fund. And then the table there is that table that you'll see in the, the annual budget. And obviously, I was thinking the same thing Ms. Walchak was thinking of because apparently that label is now gone out of, out of my chart, so. So the recommended motion there is to adopt them as presented, which would be the seven percent for water and the three percent for sewer.
Do you have questions for Steve?
So Steve mentioned rebuilding fund balance in the water fund. Just to give you an idea, it was projected that fund balance at June thirty twenty-six would end up to be four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
Close?
Pretty close.
Okay.
So, but the sewer is at, is expected to be at one point eight five million.
I like to shoot for about a million in each, where we like to be, but, you know, we had built those up for so many years because it was quite a few years without any capital projects that we were able to do COVID and all.
Oh, pardon me, the, so if it were like a fifteen thousand gallon unit, the increase, would it be twenty dollars to the overall bill that?
Twenty-two dollars to the overall bill.
Okay.
The quarter.
Okay.
This was the same increase as last year?
This is the same, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's been year over year? It's increased, or just last year?
Last year was this and then the years prior, I listed them out, there were, you know, two percent, five percent, five years ago, and then two percent, two point two eight, and then two point oh eight, and then two point oh four. We just kind of kept it at a minimum, but I, I don't think we can do that at this juncture. I think we need to bump it up to that, that five percent again this year, I think. So, and then we'll evaluate, you know, the, the Clearwell project will be closer to finishing. We'll kind of evaluate where we're at and see what projects we want to look at going forward and see what we can do.
We need this because the capital projects that are.
Right. That have taken the fund balance down.
Okay.
You know, the Second Avenue project was a pretty giant project to take on. It was more than what we typically do in a year and then we also did fair at the same time. So it was, and they were both much needed, but.
So on the Clearwell, that came in at nine, eight million?
Mm-hmm.
So we've got the six million dollar grant and we want a bond for three million, so that leaves eight hundred and some thousand that came out of this, or is going to come out of this fund balance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just so everyone knows, anyone who's new, we set water and sewer rates every year, the council does, so that, we do this every year. It's not like this, this is for this year, but we also get to determine what it is. I mean, staff can tell us that they want, you know, seven percent and three percent and they, they know what they need, but if we think that it's maybe too much, we have the authority to change it, just so you know. So, inside, entertain a motion and we can have discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed water and sewer rates as presented and incorporate the chart as shown into the budget.
Council and Carrier made a motion to adopt the proposed water and sewer rates as presented and incorporate the chart as shown into the budget. It was seconded by Mayor Proton. Discussion?
So that is the seven percent increase on water and three percent on sewer.
So it would average out to five percent? Is that the totals that you were giving us before with the five oh four, the two point two eight? Were those combined water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, correct.
So it would be another five percent increase. Are there any chances of it, like plateauing or maybe decreasing a little bit over?
Very welcome, yeah. We could kind of look at what we've got next year coming in and we could say, oh, maybe it's, maybe we just need three percent.
Okay, like another three percent increase?
Yeah, you, you can't, yeah, we can't not increase.
Okay.
Because our contracted services increases every year, all the, all the costs for, to, to do all the operations and maintenance increase every year. So we've got to, we've got to at least keep up with that.
Right.
And then when you, when you say three to five percent is kind of what the contract will go up, to do any savings for the funds and to do any additional capital projects, you almost need to be above that contracted rate.
Right.
You start putting money away. That's just something to keep in mind, yeah.
Yeah.
General fund does not subsidize the water and sewer funds. It can, but it, we can't afford it. There's too many projects that you, right, that are of the general fund that we're not doing, so.
And so this increase is obviously going to benefit them in the long run with, you know, things getting improved and.
And, and important point, and I made this to Kevin when we were talking, is the general fund can support water and sewer projects, but it can't go the other way.
Right.
The water and sewer projects, like any revenue brought in from user fees stays with the water and sewer funds.
Okay.
They're called enterprise funds. They stay there. They cannot leave.
So the water can't leave water. And, okay.
You can't even use water for a sewer project, but they're often combined projects because we do that infrastructure at the same time.
Okay.
That's why it's separate from the budget too. Water is separate from sewer. Okay, um, when's the last time it's been raised by five percent, so it's three percent?
It was, last year was five percent and then five years ago, it was five percent. And between those years, it was just two, two percent each of those years.
It's on our contract.
It depends, there's a lot of published percentages that they use and there's subtraction and division and whatever, but roughly it's in that, probably more, more like a four to five percent range.
Doesn't it go with the rate of inflation?
Those are the rate of inflation and, and wages. Yep, there's, there's a, a rate of, rate of inflation that, that is applied to the, the service group's wages and they, they pull those out of published magazines and stuff. They, they do all that.
These amounts.
Big.
Amounts.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Steve.
But.
These amounts, these percentages that we're asking for are no more than what we're being charged. So we're just in keeping with, just, just for purposes of justification because, you know, watching pennies and stuff like that, but this is something the city's being charged, so, you know, it has to, you have to be in keeping with that. Okay.
And it's not just our contract for, you know, services with Veolia, it's everything that we do, construction, project, all of those, because we're, you know, being charged increased rates every year, so we have to keep up with that.
Right, right.
Is there much comment if, when the rates are increased? I mean, it's just normal inflation.
I didn't, I didn't receive any, any direct calls or anything like that last year.
Just curious, and just, we accept it's the natural way of things.
Yeah. Yeah.
And no one's going to like an increase, but it's just, it's necessary to keep our system safe.
Yeah, but, and that's partially, that, that's partially why I do the, the one chart there that shows that your bill is going up twenty-two dollars a quarter.
Right.
So you're, you're, you're doing, it's basically a hundred dollars for the entire year for, for the water you're using.
To keep up with.
Keep up.
Yeah.
Right, right.
It's not increasing by the increase in the Veolia contract and that's more money that comes out of the fund balance.
Right.
And less money for projects.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Any discussion? Anna. Do you want me to read it?
Councilmember Carrier?
Second by?
Yes.
Second by?
Mayor Proton.
Okay.
Seven, and then Miss Proton, correct? That's what I wrote.
Uh, Councilmember Holliday?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Walchak?
Aye.
And Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Wants to adjourn us to close question. I'll do that. I mean that we adjourned for session and read A and B to discuss water and sewer litigation updates and discuss an update regarding proposed litigation with the Alpino, Alpina Prototype Bio Refinery LLC, American Process Incorporated and Grant Bio LLC.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Walchak?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliday?
Aye.